Move on to adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Commissioner Gooding.
Aye.
Commissioner Lau.
Aye.
Commissioner Saishan.
Aye.
The adoption of the agenda passes with three votes tonight. And we'll move to the consent calendar. I want to ask if there's any members of the public who'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And we can have anybody, any, can the staff please post the text in the Zoom? Call in number for, thank you. While we wait for that, may I ask if any of the commissioners would like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
None, thank you.
No one in the Zoom meeting has raised their hand?
Thank you.
We'll move on to oral communications.
Oh, through the chair, we need to have a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
May I ask for a vote?
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Saishan?
Aye.
The adoption of the agenda passes with three votes tonight. And we'll move to the consent calendar. I want to ask if there's any members of the public who'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar? And we can have anybody, any, can the staff please post the text in the Zoom? Call in number for, thank you. While we wait for that, may I ask if any of the commissioners would like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
None, thank you.
Fifteen seconds. No one in the Zoom meeting has raised their hand?
Thank you.
We'll move on to oral communications.
Oh, through the chair, we need to have a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
May I ask for a vote?
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Saishan?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent calendar passes with three ayes. Now, we can move to the oral communications. I'd like to ask, address the commission if there's any items to wish to address that aren't on tonight's agenda? And also announce that any oral comments that might be called in by calling the teleconference number or participants in Zoom? Thirty seconds. Ten seconds. No one in Zoom has raised their hand? Thank you. We'll move on to written communications. I want to acknowledge that we received two written communications regarding public hearing on 3708 Bayshore Boulevard. And in summary, one had concerns or questions regarding the engineering for retaining wall. And the other written correspondence had questions and concerns regarding the biologic impact of grading at that location. I want to ask the staff if there's any additional written communications that were received that weren't sent to the commission?
No, there aren't.
And can I ask the staff if there are any callers or Zoom participants have indicated that they'd like to make any oral comments?
There were none.
Thank you. Moving right along, I'll go to old business, which are none. And then we'll go to new business. Let's see here, sorry. So I'm going to read the first new business, which will be the public hearing on 5 Beatty Avenue, 2023-UP-5 and 2023-UP-6 and 2023-EX-2. It's a Baylands interim use permit, parking modification use permit and grading permit to allow for parking of approximately 199 San Francisco district school buses and placement of an approximately 2,880 square foot office trailer for bus operations management on a 3.3 acre gravelled surface site, which was formerly used for San Francisco 49ers parking, with grading of approximately 493 cubic yards of cut and 240 cubic yards of fill to level certain settlement monitoring stations and soil berms. And finding that this project is categorically exempt from environmental review under SEQA Guidelines Section 15301 and 15304 AE, Travis Duncan's the applicant and Baylands Development Incorporated is owner. May I ask for a presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commission. The applicant requests approval of a interim use permit to allow Zoom to park approximately 199 San Francisco school bus district buses on the roughly 3.3 acre site. A five-year term is requested. The site is located atop the Baylands landfill, which was closed to operations in the 1960s. This particular area of the Baylands was also formerly used for the 49ers overflow parking, so it has already been graded and surfaced with gravel. The buses would range in size from minivans, shuttle buses and shuttle buses up to standard school bus size, with the majority being in the small to midsize range, less than 23 feet in length. And that's to serve San Francisco's urban neighborhoods. An approximately 2,800 square foot office trailer would be placed at the site as a bus operations management office, and that would serve approximately 10 people. Along with the request for an interim use permit or request for a grading permit and parking modification use permit, the grading would be to level out a few landfill settlements, monitoring stations that are no longer in use, and a couple soil burn areas within the parking area. And that would essentially level out those surfaces with the surrounding parking area. And as mentioned in the introduction, it's approximately 493 cubic yards of cut and 240 cubic yards of fill. Also, since the parking in support of the office is proposed to be accommodated on the existing gravel surface and not paved, a parking modification use permit is requested. The applicant has provided a project description, which was included in the agenda report, and describes the work needed to occupy the site and also the day-to-day operations. As mentioned, the proposal is to park 199 school buses at the site to serve the San Francisco schools. The entrance to the site is from a paved, two-lane entrance drive along Beatty Avenue. That's just on the right from the gray area on the screen. And this is right adjacent essentially to the on and off ramps to US 101 freeway. The driveway is shared with Brisbane Recycling Company, which is located to the south on the same parcel. Site modifications would be minimal. The office and restroom facility would be trailered facilities. For security, a six-foot-high perimeter fence is proposed around the use area, along with portable solar light standards and security cameras. The applicant has indicated that they would have electrical power service to the building from a nearby power pole just at the south end of the use area. Since the site is located atop former landfill excavation for water and sewer utilities would be costly and time-consuming, and given the nature of the use, it's proposed that the site would not be served by water or sewer. Instead, a portable toilet would be maintained on-site, and the fire department has indicated that a water tank will be required for fire suppression. This would be required through the building permit process. A condition is also included to require the operator to provide bottled drinking water for its workers. Typical hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Roughly 30% of the bus routes return to the parking facility during the day, while the remainder stays close to their pickup and drop-off locations through the day. Occasionally, there would be other trips outside these hours for extracurricular activities. These may include some weekend trips in support of special school events or after-hours or before-hours. The applicant has provided a route map, which shows that the bus trips would be directly on Beatty Avenue to and from US 101, with some bus trips to or from Tunnel Avenue under unusual circumstances such as road closures, or if local serving buses are needed, and those would be as a condition of approval that the planning director approves such circumstances. The highest concentration of hourly vehicle trips would occur between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays, and that's at approximately 100 trips during that hour. Since the proposal is to conduct the use on the existing gravel surface lot, dust control measures would be implemented on an ongoing basis per city-approved dust control plan. Brisbane Municipal Code provides required findings and conditions of approval for the interim uses in the Baylands subarea. It also provides for granting parking modification through use permit findings, and we're planning commission review of grading of more than 250 cubic yards is to occur, as is the case here. The commission provides recommendations to the city engineer prior to the engineer's issuance of a grading permit. There were a number of findings for planning commission approval requested, further requested permits, and these were discussed in detail in the agenda report. In brief, the proposal, including the conditions of approval, complies with all of the findings for approval. Note that the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding industrial uses. Its location provides ready access to US And can I ask the staff if there are any callers or Zoom participants have indicated that they'd like to make any oral comments?
There were none.
Thank you. Moving right along, I'll go to old business, which are none. And then we'll go to new business. Sorry. So I'm going to read the first new business, which will be the public hearing on 5 Beatty Avenue, 2023-UP-5 and 2023-UP-6 and 2023-EX-2. It's a Baylands interim use permit, parking modification, use permit and grading permit to allow for parking of approximately 199 San Francisco district school buses and placement of an approximately 2,880 square foot office trailer for bus operations management on a 3.3 acre gravelled surface site, which was formerly used for San Francisco 49ers parking, with grading of approximately 493 cubic yards of cut and 240 cubic yards of fill to level certain settlement monitoring stations and soil burns. And finding that this project is categorically exempt from environmental review under CEQA guidelines, section 15301 and 15304 AE. Travis Duncan is the applicant and Baylands Development Incorporated is owner. May I ask for a presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commission. The applicant requests approval of a interim use permit to allow Zoom to park approximately 199 San Francisco school bus district buses on the roughly 3.3 acre site. A five-year term is requested. The site is located atop the Baylands landfill, which was closed to operations in the 1960s. This particular area of the Baylands was also formerly used for the 49ers overflow parking, so it has already been graded and surfaced with gravel. The buses would range in size from minivans, shuttle buses and shuttle buses up to standard school bus size, with the majority being in the small to midsize range, less than 23 feet in length. And that's to serve San Francisco's urban neighborhoods. An approximately 2,800 square foot office trailer would be placed at the site as a bus operations management office, and that would serve approximately 10 people. Along with the request for an interim use permit or request for a grading permit and parking modification use permit. The grading would be to level out a few landfill settlements, monitoring stations that are no longer in use and a couple soil burn areas within the parking area. And that would essentially level out those surfaces with the surrounding parking area. And as mentioned in the introduction, it's approximately 493 cubic yards of cut and 240 cubic yards of fill. Also, since the parking in support of the office is proposed to be accommodated on the existing gravel surface and not paved, a parking modification use permit is requested. The applicant has provided a project description, which was included in the agenda report, and describes the work needed to occupy the site and also the day-to-day operations. As mentioned, the proposal is to park 199 school buses at the site to serve the San Francisco schools. The entrance to the site is from a paved, two-lane entrance drive along Beatty Avenue. That's just on the right from the gray area on the screen. And this is right adjacent essentially to the on and off ramps to US 101 freeway. The driveway is shared with Brisbane Recycling Company, which is located to the south on the same parcel. Site modifications would be minimal. The office and restroom facility would be trailered facilities. For security, a six-foot-high perimeter fence is proposed around the use area, along with portable solar light standards and security cameras. The applicant has indicated that they would have electrical power service to the building from a nearby power pole just at the south end of the use area. Since the site is located atop a former landfill excavation for water and sewer utilities would be costly and time-consuming. And given the nature of the use, it's proposed that the site would not be served by water or sewer. Instead, a portable toilet would be maintained on-site. And the fire department has indicated that a water tank will be required for fire suppression. This would be required through the building permit process. A condition is also included to require the operator to provide bottled drinking water for its workers. Typical hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Roughly 30% of the bus routes return to the parking facility during the day, while the remainder stays close to their pickup and drop-off locations through the day. Occasionally, there would be other trips outside these hours for extracurricular activities. These may include some weekend trips in support of special school events or after-hours or before-hours. The applicant has provided a roadmap which shows that the bus trips would be directly on Beatty Avenue to and from US 101, with some bus trips to or from Tunnel Avenue under unusual circumstances such as road closures or if local serving buses are needed, and those would be as a condition of approval that the planning director approves such circumstances. The highest concentration of hourly vehicle trips would occur between 6:00 and 7:00 AM on weekdays, and that's at approximately 100 trips during that hour. Since the proposal is to conduct the use on the existing gravel surface lot, dust control measures would be implemented on an ongoing basis per city-approved dust control plan. Brisbane Municipal Code provides required findings and conditions of approval for the interim uses in the Baylands subarea. It also provides for granting parking modification through use permit findings. And we're planning commission review of grading of more than 250 cubic yards is to occur, as is the case here. The commission provides recommendations to the city engineer prior to the engineer's issuance of a grading permit. There were a number of findings for planning commission approval requested, further requested permits, and these were discussed in detail in the agenda report. In brief, the proposal, including the conditions of approval, complies with all of the findings for approval. Note that the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding industrial uses. Its location provides ready access to US 101 for buses and associated personal vehicles. A building permit will be required to establish the use. Lighting would be provided via the portable light standards, as I mentioned, which would be required to be directed downward onto the site. And a dust control plan would be required by the city engineer. Finally, this application was provided to the various city departments and outside agencies, as noted in the report. Recommended conditions of approval have been provided by some of these departments and are included in the draft resolution. And I just mentioned, planning will, would like to add one condition of approval that was omitted from this list, and that is essentially that the operator shall be required to comply with applicable transportation demand management measures and reporting consistent with CCAG's TDM policies. These measures essentially provide such things as incentives to reduce private vehicle trips, might be incentives such as use of public transportation vouchers, carpooling support and so forth. And the applicant has already demonstrated that they can comply with the CCAG requirements for that, so that would be also processed through the building permit process. So again, that the operator be required to comply with the applicable TDM measures and reporting consistent with the CCAG's TDM policy. So in closing, staff recommends approval of interim use permit application, 2023 UP-5, 2023 UP-6, 2023 EX-2, the adoption of the resolution containing the findings. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Saisan, do you have any questions for the staff?
No, I have some for the applicant, but nothing for staff right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Gooding?
Just one, and it might be better for the applicant, but in case you know, do we know how many more buses or how much more traffic this permit will entail than, say, the 49ers had made use of for the property? That might be for the applicant, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the applicant would know that either, but the the last use permit I looked up for the 49ers was 600 vehicles and presumably most, if not all of those, would have been personal vehicles, so you would have had, you know, times two, one trip each way, 1,200. And this is throughout the day, would be just over 500 vehicle trips. So substantially lower and spread out through the day versus 49ers would have been more concentrated right before and after games.
Right, the Niners have been during the weekends primarily, I assume?
Right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have some questions. I'm not sure if it's to the staff or to the applicant, but maybe I can ask anyways. On is, are there grading requirements to allow for like storm runoff or, you know?
Right, so this went through the city engineer, both as a planning application, it'll also go through him for the more detailed grading review. And that's one of the things that he looks at. This has already been graded to go to a nearby, for stormwater to flow to a nearby swale. Of course, it's a gravel lot, so some of the stormwater is going to actually seep into the lot and not reach the swale necessarily.
Thank you. And then also had a question on, was there any consideration of like the impact to the streets or roads like on Alana Way or is it the Frontage Road on that 101 North approach? Those lanes, those streets are in poor condition as it is, I think, believe, you know, I think maybe from the heavy vehicles that, you know, that go through there, but wondering if, you know, with additional buses and, you know, going through there, you know, the impact to those streets?
Right, so similarly, this went to the city engineer, he didn't raise any concerns with the roadways there. But yeah, I see your point. I think that that stretch gets some large vehicles and quite a few of them already, but no concerns were raised.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant would like to speak?
Yeah. Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Travis Duncan. I'm VPO Development for DECA. We're here representing Vivek Garg and Zoom as their sort of real estate person. Vivek is a school bus operator, and land use issues like this are different than, you know, many of the other districts they're working in. So we're here to sort of help that happen. So good evening. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you, Ken, for a great presentation. He's been wonderful to work with. Did a great job. Go to the next slide, Ken. Thank you. That is pretty blurry. There we go. Ken gave you a great overview of the site. Not much more to say other than a couple of things. Two entry points here on the eastern side of the site. And the office facilities are kind of on the northeast corner, the top right of the screen, which is where it kind of gets a little tighter up there. It couldn't get as many buses. Wanted to respond to your two questions, and I think I do know some about stormwater. There is an existing stormwater plan in place for this area of the Baylands that is continuing to be maintained. So we're not fundamentally altering the stormwater configuration here. We're simply keeping it as it is functioning today. The second question about the number of vehicles, I just want to make sure that the numbers were clear there. These are slightly larger than normal vehicles, so in the passenger car phenomenon of the 49ers parking lot, it was much more densely parked, so there's many more vehicles in the 49ers configuration than what we're talking about here. Ken, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Just wanted to give you a little bit more information on what's happening out there. This is a vacant site for the most part today. It's unused, and our proposal is really to just flatten it and make it usable for Zoom. The temporary restrooms and buildings are really like trailers. It's more to a construction site you might see. As we all know, this is an interim use permit for Baylands to do their development in the future. This is a short-term solution for both sides, and I think it's a great match of the needs of the Baylands to make use of their lands in the interim and a great use for Zoom to be able to access sort of the full part of San Francisco, so it's a real great opportunity. Ken mentioned no permanent utilities going in here because of the landfill considerations. That includes water and septic, which will be handled via tank systems, which we're all feeling very comfortable about. ADA access is maintained as part of these buildings, which was one of the things we discussed a lot about. And the reason why, you know, Zoom is really excited about this opportunity is because of its proximity to 101. And that very short connection to 101 makes, so there's very little impact on the city of Brisbane, which obviously is a worthwhile concern. Go to the next slide, Ken. Thank you. And just a little bit more information on the types of buses. We sort of thought this might be a question. I want to just draw your attention to the top right here, which I'm not sure on your screen you can see the Zoom, but the Z-O-O-M, Zoom window. You'll see that most of the buses we're talking about here are not the large school buses we're all accustomed to seeing. The vast majority of them are the type A buses, which are kind of like half-size buses. There's an expression we all probably remember from our childhoods that we don't use anymore. Thank you very much for hiding that, as well as many of these being minivans and SUVs. And Vivek and I spent a lot of time talking about this. It's one of the things that Zoom does really well, since it's a U-M now, is picking the right vehicle for the right route and making sure that if, hey, if only a couple people are taking that route, let's not send a big bus. Let's send a more compact vehicle that, as Ken said, is more appropriate for the urban environment. The buses shown on the left-hand side are there to show you what those sizes look like. And with that, I really want to bring up Vivek Garg, co-founder of Zoom. He's going to be the, you know, the guy there all the time. He's going to walk you through Zoom, give you a little bit more background there, and we'll both be available for questions. Thank you very much. Go to the next slide.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to represent Zoom. I'm co-founder of Zoom. We have contracted with San Francisco Unified, just like many other districts in the Bay Area, like we also drive students in Oakland Unified and Alameda Unified and many other schools, you know, on the peninsula as well. And we started this company, basically me and my sister, we two had started this company in 2015 with one simple mission of modernizing student transportation. We realized that the industry has remained very, very antiquated. And Ken, if you could just go to the next slide. Rithu and I, we both are first-generation immigrant to US. And Rithu and I were talking about this. She was a tech entrepreneur who was about to leave her job because she has got two middle-aged kids who never could find, you know, safe and reliable transportation. And I came from a very different career. For 11 years, I was an army officer. So I served in military, and we both were talking about this. And my point was, our mom had done the same thing 30 years back as a teacher. You know, she had left her job because four of us, you know, needed to be, you know, taken around to different places. So it just seemed that nothing had changed, and last 30, 40 years, parents were still struggling for very basic but very fundamental, you know, need of transportation. And kids were making suboptimal choices as well, like, you know, when a kid wants to go to ballet, they end up going to Taekwondo because neighbor kid is going to Taekwondo, you know, like that, those are the kind of choices that families are making. So we just felt that there was a lot of scope to modernize this transportation, and we understand the impact of it. That's why we started this company. Ken, if you could go to the next slide, please. We have built a really strong track record in this time. There are many things and many modern ways that we do, which I can, you know, walk you through. But in last, you know, seven, eight years, we have driven over 16.5 million miles. We have driven around over 8 million children. We actually record our customer ratings, like so our users, when they, like parents, when they use our school buses, they're able to rate their school bus ride after every ride, so we have collected over 300,000 ratings from parents, and on that, an average, we are 4.9 for a star out of 5. So there's a lot of, you know, customer obsession, user obsession, you know, that we carry in our company. Really a strong track record of safety and, like, you can see the accident rate and, you know, like how it is, and we built this company in a way that, you know, we are actually the only carbon-neutral school transportation fleet in US as well today. Can we go to the next slide, please? Not to brag, but we have been recognized, you know, fairly well in this time, but see, there are different kind of, you know, things for which we have been recognized, but it is very unique for a school transportation company to be recognized like a world-changing ideas. And we have been, you know, like, and we were among the companies like, you know, like really large companies, and despite being small, we have been recognized because how we are focusing, this is the largest mass transportation system in US. Like, we don't realize but 27 million students take rides every day. If you even put rail, trains, you know, airlines, metro, trucks, everything together, it is double the size of that. So it's a very important, you know, industry to be modernized. And we have been recognized a lot. Rithu was actually recognized as the, among the top 100 Inc. female founders recently as well. Can we go to the next slide, please? We have focused on three things when we were building this company. One was about being, making this extremely student-centric, so everything that we have designed, it's in a very design-thinking way, like Rithu and I, we went to a school where, you know, design thinking was like kind of the, kind of the focus. So there's a lot of focus on how we can make it user-friendly, but the other part of it is how we can make it employee-friendly. So you will see that we have created very high-paying jobs. When we had taken over this contract, these jobs were really low-paid, like right now, our serial drivers, the school bus drivers, they are earning $40 an hour rate, and we guaranteed them six hours in a day. And we provide them health benefits, medical benefits for them and their families. It's a really good work culture. We also get ourselves assessed for best places to work. And for last three years, it just shows too, but for last three years, we have been consistently adjusted as best places to work company. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so here it is. We are very active in the community. Out of the four values that we carry in the company, being customer obsessed, being, you know, doing things the right way, thinking big, executing meticulously, but the last thing is building better communities. We are extremely active in any community that we go to, like how we can contribute to the community and how we can be a good citizen. So we thank you a lot. We will be driving a lot of special-needs children here. Actually, most, majority of the children in San Francisco are special-needs children. Only 40 buses are actually for general education. Otherwise, more than 200 buses are actually for special education children. And we believe that we will be a very good citizen of, you know, Brisbane community when we are doing business from here. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Vivek. We're here for questions, obviously. Thank you so much for the time tonight. Again, thanks to Ken for, you know, guiding us along the path, and we sure hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for your presentation. Looks like you have a great company and you seem like a great employer as well. So my main concern is about traffic and safety issues, you know, for you to, you know, operate, you know, where, you know, you intend to. I mean, that area just has a lot of business around it and, you know, the, you know, it's one-way, each-way, you know, that's Beatty. And so my first question is, so in terms of staffing, you have 10 permanent staff that's there and then 199 bus drivers, correct?
Yes, you're right. It'll be somewhere in that range.
And does your site allow for all of them, let's say if they were all planning to drive, does your site accommodate that or are you depending on them, I think in your application, you said 25% would likely take public transportation and 30% would carpool. So are you relying on that or could your site accommodate if everyone drove?
So everyone is not driving. Like, we have been running this contract for the last three years, so the numbers that we are showing you are actually, you know, not they are not projections. They are coming from, you know, what we have seen in actual. And we run employee shuttles. We encourage, you know, carpooling, which most of the drivers, they really love to do. There is a public transportation access here, so, you know, they love to take public transportation as well. So these numbers are actually coming from our experience of San Francisco, running San Francisco operations.
There's that one thing, one of the things that surprised me at not being in this every day is when the driver of the bus arrives, they might not be the first bus to leave, but the buses leave and they leave staggered over, you know, the bus is going farthest to the northwest corner of the city, have to leave earlier to get there, be out of Richmond. So the driver who comes in a little bit later can park their car right where that bus was. There's all kinds of room for that employee parking because of the way the buses are staggered. So Vivek is absolutely right. He's got actual numbers on what kind of public transportation people are taking, and even if every single person were to drive, there's more than enough room for them to park. We heard earlier, there was something like 600 people parking there during the 49ers parking, so clearly there's enough capacity to be able to.
So you have looked at that, and if everybody and the buses were there, you could accommodate every?
100%.
Okay. Okay, one more question. You stated that, at least your report stated that you would have security cameras at entry points. And how many cameras in total?
Yeah, there's two entry points, there'll be two cameras.
And would they be pointed in opposite directions?
They'd both be focused on the entrance themselves, making sure.
Okay, so inward, like not towards like traffic movement or anything?
The cameras would be mounted inside on our property, so I think by virtue of being inside and facing the gate, they would face the sort of coming inside. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because we've kind of addressed this with other applicants, you know, for example, we had Google Bus on Tunnel Avenue. And so one of our concerns is to try to gauge if there's going to be a traffic problem. So if your cameras could also face, you know, the traffic going one way and the other, so we can see the flow like in the mornings or the later hours, so we can get an idea that that is not causing a traffic problem. And I don't know, maybe your cameras will also show things that are of that, that is not causing a, a traffic problem and, and I don't know, maybe your cameras will also show things that are of concern, like maybe dust or, you know, it would capture other things that, you know, tend to be an issue, so I just wanted to get an idea of, of what we can expect from the security cameras, you know, what, what, what it can show.
Yeah, I think um, the, the security cameras are there to provide security. And I think for Zoom as the tenant, they want to make sure that they're not having unauthorized people coming onto the site. Those buses are, are very valuable and um, there's no presumed problems with anything there and they want to make sure that their, you know, assets are protected. So I understand your question and I, I'm not sure those security cameras are gonna provide much more than their sort of intended use, which is, you know, securing that perimeter.
If we were to make it a condition of approval, how difficult would it be for you guys to add that?
I think it's fairly challenging, um, the idea of giving, you know, a public body access to a private camera is a little bit of a strange phenomenon. Um, it's certainly not impossible, but I, I, I think speaking for us, like, I'm not sure that's the direction we're hoping the commission would go this evening.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yes, thank you, um, and this might have been a question I should have asked staff, but the, the permit application is for a five year period, I take it. Um, in the event there are, you know, any, any problems or complaints, what if, if any is our, our vehicle for addressing um, any, any, either public complaints or other issues that come up about, about the impact of this use?
The, the first line would be to reach out. Uh, staff would reach out directly to the operator and the applicant to, to correct whatever issue might be raised. Um, and, and if that's unsuccessful, of course, there is the re-revocation procedures, we don't want to go there necessarily, but as, as we know, it has happened on Google, but um, the first line, of course, would be just to reach out and I, I think you have a uh, operator here who's, who's um eager to be a good ci- citizen and, and probably cooperative, so.
Yeah, I, I don't expect, I'm not anticipating anything specific, I just, the, the last time we had a, a parking lot out there, we did have some some issues come up over the, over the months of usage that we had anticipated and just trying to provide for some mechanism by which we can either check on the permit and see how it's doing or I don't know if that's a concern of the rest of the commission or not, um, but that's, that's the one issue I have is it, you know, might there be a, a, a condition that, that this would come up for a review in a year or two and if things are going fine, then fine. Um, but that would be one, one suggestion I would have that, for consideration by my fellow commissioners. Other than that, no, no other questions, thank you.
If I may, just, you know, uh, say one thing, uh, with regard to, you know, the workforce that we are, we are talking about because uh, the kind of people who will operate this will, you know, dictate a lot of how they will behave in the, in the area. Uh, school drivers are some of the most trained drivers out there. Uh, and their school uh, driver license is um, is considered, you know, the most premium license, you know, like out there, you know, when you, when you look at drivers, they go through so much of training uh, before they become school bus drivers and they have to maintain such strict standards to, you know, uh, continue with their license. Uh, and they actually drive children, if you ask them, most of them will say it is not for money, it is actually, you know, because they love working for children, like more, if you look at our drivers, we just did a celebrations and the number of drivers who had served more than, you know, twenty, thirty, even they were drivers for fifty years, they were just driving for San Francisco Unified, same children every day. Uh, they go through so, so much behavioral training around, you know, special need children, like how to, you know, manage special need children when they're on the bus, uh, and taking transportation, they are, they're a driver, when they are driving a school bus, they are not just a school bus driver, some, they are, they are a friend, they are, they are a mentor, sometime they're even a therapist to that child, like, you know, they they, they are a caregiver on the bus, so it's a very different uh, workforce which will be coming to you. I know about the challenges you have had in past, but you know, these two workforce are going to be, it is not apple to apple comparison, uh, this is going to be, I think, a really good workforce uh, to be, to be working from, you know, the city, uh, I just wanted to add that color because um, uh, because school bus operation is just a very, you know, different uh, different operation, you know, like what, what we are serving uh, is a very different community, uh, actually. Thank you.
Can you um, go back, I wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Gooding had asked, um. Uh, so in terms of the investment of time or resource that you would have to put in to set this up, you know, your, your operation there, if we were to um, you know, reduce the use permit time, to, to shorten it as some, as, as a, just a trial period, would, would that pose a challenge for you?
It poses a really big challenge and the reason is because um, uh, our contract for the school district is for us, you know, it is, it is like five plus five year, you know, kind of contract of which we have, we have, you know, already taken, you know, two, two, three years and we are looking for, you know, like uh, a land which allows us to be there for a certain amount of time. For, for various reasons, one is um, uh, one is that, you know, we will be investing and we will be, you know, prepping up this land to, um, to uh, to establish ourself. Uh, the second is definitely the continuity, you know, for employees to get uprooted from a place which they, you know, kind of make as their semi home again and again is a finding land again and again is also not, uh, not something which is, you know, it's very easy. Right now, what we are trying to do is to reduce uh, the travel time for the, for the children and, you know, ensure that they are picked up on the time. Right now, we are more on the north side of the San Francisco and to pick up children from the southern side has become extremely tough. So we are trying to, you know, divide the operation on two sides, that is what we are trying to do so that children can be picked up, you know, uh, on time for their school. Uh, so all those things have been kept in mind uh, here, uh, so that is why the minimum term of, you know, five years is uh, is, 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 is what is required here. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, while you're still up there, thank you for your presentation and one of the questions that you had previously answered, uh, Commissioner Sayasan had regarding the um, onsite parking for the employees, but um, adding to Commissioner Gooding's comment, what would your thoughts be on? I'm sure you have use logs, and usage logs of the buses, like, you know, when they go out and, and when they come back in. What would your thoughts be on um, allowing access from the city or the commission to, you know, check the volume of those, the usage logs?
Yeah, so uh, one thing that I want to, um, you know, uh, also say, uh, school buses are the most predictable, most predictable, you know, transportation which is moving around. So like if I give you uh, usage log of, you know, last one month, for example, you will see that the same routes are being run every day, the morning, you know, leaving time is fixed, uh, afternoon, most of the buses will not come back because, you know, they stay where they are, uh, near the school sites or at the school site and when they pick up the kids in the afternoon. Uh, so it's the most predictable uh, operation that you will see. So uh, the, that's the reason why, you know, uh, what, what we maintain, like, for example, we would know what time the bus is leaving the yard, uh, and we can give you, but even if I give it to you one time or if I give it to you for every day, that log is not going to change. Every route has been bidded by a union employee and anytime, you know, that route changes after some, up to some time, there's a rebid that has to happen, so it's a very fixed operation uh, that we run from the log perspective, so uh, can we provide it, if, if it is, if it is a must, we can, but uh, I can very confidently say that you will not find it, you know, uh, like lot of uh, movement in that log to make something out of it. These are two hundred buses, they will go out, they will pick up kids and they will come back. Um, that is what is going to happen, sometime few buses go out for a field trip. Uh, but when it is in the daytime, they go from where they drop the kids and there are no day, you know, field trips in the night as such, uh, so they, so they come back. Uh, that's my, you know, uh, submission, having run this for many years, uh, but, but if you insist that, that should be a condition, we can look into it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, one more comment, I'm, I'm glad to see then, on this occasion, the, the, the routing to and from or directly to and from one oh one from, from the site is, is a condition of, of the permit. And I just want to emphasize that the, the last issue we had with the parking lot uh, in this town, the, the thorny issue became um, you know, pretty chronic and unreported deviations from, from that that create traffic impacts and, and safety impacts to, to the city. Um, which we don't want to have, it's a lot of, you know, two hundred vehicles, a lot of vehicles per day and it's, it really changes the usage of the city's access to, to our, um, our routes to and from freeways. So um, I just want to emphasize that and, and make sure you folks realize that, that that routing to and from um, one oh one is a condition of the permit and I think historically this commission is gonna be a, a, a real deal breaker if, if we get any complaints or problems with, with that not being observed, so. Um, other than that, I'm done, thank you.
Um, can we announce um, um, if any comments would like to be called in um, by teleconference or by the Zoom webinar?
Yeah, I'll put the screen up and we do have Michelle Salmon who would like to speak. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I, I think that this is a noble endeavor and we need school buses, but I do want to bring up several concerns that I have for safety, not just of the school buses, but for everyone in, in that area. First of all, I think many of you are aware that Recology now has a huge employee force that is working at their facility there and they now park all the way along Tunnel, um, starting about where Sierra Golden State Lumber is, all the way up um, into San Francisco. And then on Beatty, on the north side of Beatty, they uh, have, they're parking three rows deep. Plus the parking lot there on Beatty that belongs to Recology is completely full. And on the south side of the street, they have cars all the way along Beatty now as well. Um, and that's a concern because that, that's a lot of cars and a lot of traffic. And you said that the bus routing um, has to be on uh, one oh one and not, you know, down on Beatty and up Tunnel. Um, but what about the routing of the employees? They may be coming from, you know, somewhere else and not take the one oh one. And so that would add to the traffic there and the safety issues there. Um, so Beatty is, is kind of narrow right now. The other problem with Beatty is there is no sidewalk or pathway for anyone coming, walking to the site for, from public transportation being at Sam Trans, Muni or the Caltrain Station, there is no safe sidewalk for any pedestrians along that route. Um, the other uh, thing that I have a problem with is the condition of Harney Way currently, which is the uh, northbound access to one oh one. I just drove it yesterday and the day before and it is a mess. Um, there is numerous potholes, the stop sign uh, and the wafer is not marked well when you turn from a lawn onto Harney Way or whatever the name of that street is that connects Beatty with Harney Way. Those, that, the, the conditions of the road are terrible. And you will be sharing that on ramp with the garbage trucks which use it extensively, especially at that same morning time of day and also with uh, cars and commuters and in some cases the paratransit buses and the people who have just loaded up at Golden State Lumber and think nothing about pulling out in front of you on Tunnel Road uh, at a much slower rate than, of traffic than the traffic flow and the speed limit. So I just want to bring those up, all as concerns that really should be addressed before uh, we move forward with this, even though I, in my heart, I'm in favor of it. These concerns are real and they have real impact. And then the last one is not so much, well, I'm concerned about nighttime security, lighting being another like blown out blip uh, of light coming from that area. And so if we did uh, uh, approve this, I would want that really strictly only shielded lights downward facing, not higher than, you know, poles not higher than ten feet or whatever would be above the bus level. Um, so that is a concern and that's a, 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 um, not only a visual concern with light pollution, but we know that light pollution also has a great impact on um, natural resources. So those are all of my concerns and I really didn't intend to bring them all up, but you know, I started thinking about it when I drove down Beatty the last two days and, and saw, you know, the entire Beatty with three rows of cars on one side and one row of car on the other and their parking lot entirely full and Tunnel completely parked on, on both sides. And then I saw this proposal and it filled me with dread and concern for the safety of everyone in that area. So um, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Michelle.
There's no one else in the Zoom with the hands raised, but uh, maybe a thirty second warning?
Yes, and, yes, please, and in the meantime, I don't believe we've received any written communication um, regarding this agenda item unless there's other.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I see that Michelle has her hand raised again. Michelle, did you have something else to add?
Yes, I forgot one other point, um, I hope that you're aware that when the buses are entering one oh one from Harney Way, that it is a very hard and dangerous uphill grind uh, during the commute time and uh, that will really slow down traffic on one oh one in the um, slow lane and because you'll also be having, you won't just be able to, you know, take a run at it the way your buses would want to, to get enough momentum to get up the hill because you'll also be dealing with garbage trucks and uh, other traffic and vehicles moving into that lane that are planning on taking two eighty. I, I did this commute for years in which I'm very familiar with the traffic pattern, so as the um, the uh, I don't know what you call it, the, the applicant should be very aware of the stress that that's going to put on your buses trying to uh, enter the on-ramp safely onto the freeway uh, going uphill, okay, that's it.
There's no one else, their hands raised.
Thank you. Um, I want to ask the applicant if um, he has any, if they have any additional comments, um, you know, based on the comments that were just raised or any other comments?
Through, through the chair, do you want to close the public hearing at this time or no?
Yes, um, yeah.
You'll need a motion.
Can, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'll second.
And uh,
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Aye.
The motion passes with three ayes. Um, now can we ask the applicant if um, like to make any um, additional comments?
I just want to say thank you for her for calling in and, and by the public process, I just want to reiterate that the, the parking concern she has totally understand, sound challenging for the Recology folks and just reiterate what I said earlier around all of the people will be parking on the site and all of the cars that would be coming are able to park on the site. And I want to thank you all again for your time tonight and uh, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Um, okay, we begin the deliberation period and um, if you can, you start with Commissioner Gooding on your thoughts.
Yeah, I um, I'm, I'm inclined to, to vote to approve these permits, I, I think the, the fact that they can park on the site, I think ameliorates largely any public concerns about increased congestion out on, on Beatty and neighboring streets. Um, and I do just want to reemphasize the point I made, just to, to beat it to death, that, that the routing to and from the freeway really is a uh, an important aspect of the, the conditions of approval. We had a problem with that before, we don't want to repeat that, um, we just want to make sure that everyone on the same page, that's an important issue. And uh, it's the one that most directly impacts the, the rest of our community. And it's the one that most directly impacts the, the rest of our community, other than which, you know, this does seem to be a worthy and, and important use, or potentially important use of the property.
Commissioner Seisan?
Yeah, I'm inclined to approve it also. I have one question for staff. I don't recall if this was in a condition, but if any issues were to arise, like if there was any incidents with the, the buses, an accident or whatever, are they required to report that to us?
There's, there's no condition for them reporting accidents.
Like within the city of, you know, in, 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 in the course of, you know, the bus moving in and out, you know, within our city. So there's no condition of, of us being informed of that.
That is correct, although the, presumably the police department would be called out for an accident if, if, if the commission wants to request that the police provide a notice of an accident, we, we could pass that on to the police department.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I guess that's, that's my concern. You know, obviously the applicant said it's, it's not practical for them to have a use permit shorter than five years, and I understand that. At the same time, it's a lot of cars, it's, there'd be traveling on roadway that's already taxed, and so, you know, I think this is a good thing that I want to approve. I just have concerns, how do we monitor this? You know, usually when we approve something like this, you know, people tend to move on and, and we forget to kind of check on what's going on over, over here and, you know, and there, there could be issues. So I'm, I'm trying to think of ways, how do we, is there a way for us to monitor this? I know you mentioned a log, you know, I don't know if that kind of fits in to my concern more about, you know, traffic and safety issues, you know. I think it could help monitor, I guess, you know, the flow of in and out of the buses, so.
It's closed, but, yes.
One of the things Ken mentioned, your, your comment just jogged in my mind, it's not in the staff report, but that Ken is suggesting be approved as part of this approval tonight, is related to the, Ken, I may need your help on the exact word, but the, I think, CCAG?
Correct, CCAG.
Got it. CCAG has a transportation demand management requirement that I believe does require an annual report to be filed and submitted to the CCAG. That may be the type of report and analysis and information you're looking for on, on an annual basis. It just, it came into my mind, and I thought that may be helpful, and as a reminder, that is a condition that Ken has asked to impose that we have accepted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
What kind of information is on that annual report?
So essentially, it's, it's looking at, at trips and modes of use, and, and so this would be essentially to comply with CCAG's policy to reduce vehicle trips. And of course, it, it, it can't apply to the buses, because that is the use, but for private vehicles, they'd be looking to reduce vehicle trips. So it'd be reporting back about their performance on, on how the different incentives have worked to reduce vehicle trips.
Would that provide data on the amount of, you know, usage of, of the, of the buses then? No, only on private vehicles?
Right, they, well, I'd say that the buses would, would be something that, that should be included in that report, but it's not really so much a variable as I would see it, so.
May I ask other commissioners with date? What are their thoughts on requesting the ability to request, you know, the volume work as a provision?
A log as to, again, you mean when the buses leave and, and return to the lot? That kind of activity?
Yeah.
I guess, well, yeah, I guess, I guess if it was timestamped, you'd have an idea of the flow and certain impacts throughout the day, I guess that would be helpful.
It occurs to me that I, I think this is driven by our, is this driven by our concern that they'll deviate from, from going straight to and from 101? Is that the issue? Otherwise, if, if, I, I don't, I don't see a lot of added, added value to confirming that they're using, you know, 200 buses a day to and from 101. That's, that's exactly what they're asking for, and that's what they'll be doing. My only concern was driven by, you know, our unhappy experience with the, the previous permit applicant who simply didn't comply with, with what we understood to be the, you know, the implied usage, but, but, you know, wasn't actually a condition of the permit and caused some awkwardness about how to enforce that. Here, it is a condition of the permit. If we get complaints, presumably we can act on those complaints as a violation of the permit, since it's a clearly defined condition this time.
I wasn't so.
Also, one more point, just, the last time around, we were dealing with an applicant that was, you know, the, the master of the universe of data collection and provision, which is probably not the case with this applicant. And I'm, I'm reluctant to impose conditions of, of reporting that are, that might be onerous or, or difficult if it's, if we don't have complaints and don't have a problem. So that's my comment.
Yeah, I, I wasn't so concerned about the deviation from their route as just putting that much, you know, traffic onto the street. I, I remember, at least with the Google buses, there was an incident where the buses were, were leaving about the same time, and then cars were behind them, and, and traffic was going so slow that, you know, that one driver said he was just going to go around them. You know what I mean? You know, I, I just don't want to create a situation where people get frustrated on, on the roads because of traffic and do things that are not safe. So that was mainly the concern. But, but I suppose, I mean, this, this has, you know, been reviewed by police and, you know, fire and whatnot, and I guess they, they, they think that it won't be an issue. So I guess it's something, I guess we can approve and, and hope for the best, wait for complaints. I mean, it's, you know, I, I don't know how, I don't know what else we can do that, you know, if we put a contingency that would be too stringent and, you know, may not be that effective, so.
Yes, maybe our past experience has jaded, has jaded us. I'm inclined to also approve, my concerns were about the employee parking, as well as my concerns are still on the road conditions, you know, on the approach to 101 North. They're bad now, and I expect them to become worse, but that might have to be addressed by a different part of the, the city. Yes. Were there any other comments?
No.
No. Okay. Then I ask for a motion?
Yes, I, I would move to, to approve applications for permits 2023-UP5, 2023-UP6. And is the grading permit within our purview or not?
Yes, that is, that is correct. It's essentially a recommendation to the city.
2023-EX-2 with the findings and with the conditions proposed by staff.
I'll second.
Staff, may I ask for a vote?
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Seisan?
Aye.
So the motion passes with three ayes. And like to state that anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council, except where specified otherwise, appeals shall be filed with the city clerk no later than 15 calendar days from following the planning commission's decision. Exceptions to the 15-day filing period include the following. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the planning commission's action for use permits and variances, and 10 calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. We'll move to the second item of new business, and this is a public hearing regarding 3708 Bay Shore Boulevard Use Permit 2022-UP-7, grading review 2022-EX-5, lot merger 2022-LLA-3, and Habitat Conservation Plan Compliance 2022-HCP-1, SCRO-1 zoning district. This is the expansion of the current contractor's storage yard permitted under UP-9-12, and finding that this project is categorically exempt from environmental review under CICA Guidelines Sections 15301 and 15311. Sean Brennan is applicant, and MK Yard LLC the owner. Staff, could I have a presentation, please?
Thank you, vice chair. As introduced, this agenda item is for a use permit, grading permit review, lot merger, and San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan compliance to expand the existing use of a contractor's storage yard approximately 5,000 square feet. A use permit is required for a contractor's storage yard within the SCRO-1 Southwest Bay Shore Commercial District, and any amount of grading in the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan or HCP area requires planning commission review. Accordingly, Brisbane Municipal Code Chapter 17.40 and Brisbane Municipal Code Section 17.16.060 establish regulations for the approval and control of conditional uses within the Southwest Bay Shore area, while Brisbane Municipal Code Section 15.01.110 establishes findings for planning commission review for grading permits. Lastly, contiguous parcels held by the same owner may be merged by recordation of a declaration of lot merger signed by the property owner and acknowledged by the community development director for Brisbane Municipal Code Chapter 60, or sorry, excuse me, Section 16.12.070, and the HCP governs development of properties within the Southwest Bay Shore subarea. The subject property is comprised of three contiguous lots located within the SCRO-1 zoning district and administrative parcel 2-03, or Brisbane Acres of the HCP. The two southern properties are developed and occupied by MK Pipelines, Inc., while the northern property was more recently acquired by MK Pipelines and is undeveloped. The site plan in the middle of the screen shows the three underlying parcels and the blue and gray footprints of the existing structure and parking lot respectively. The combined lot, excuse me, the combined area of the three parcels is approximately 676,885 square feet, or 15.5 acres, and the site is accessed via Bay Shore Boulevard from the front or eastern property line. The property includes a relatively level area within the first 65 to 80 feet of the property line, as shown in the image on the left, where the existing building and paved parking lot for MK Pipelines is located, but the overall slope is approximately 46%. The project site is not immediately adjacent to any development as depicted in the aerial image, with the nearest developed parcels being approximately 470 to 610 feet away. They include residential uses to the west on Thomas Avenue and Tullary Street and the Mobile Home Park to the south. MK Pipelines is an underground utilities contractor and performs local public works projects and is currently operating under Use Permit UP-9-12, previously UP-6-11, UP-5-11, UP-5-08, UP-6-07, and UP-306 for a contractor's storage yard. They currently employ 27 employees, including four based at the subject property, and own approximately 35 pieces of construction equipment. This equipment, as well as materials, generally move between job sites, though surplus material and/or special order items are stored behind the building. The yard is currently screened by a chain-link fence with brown plastic slats, and the hours of operation are between 7:00 AM and 5:30 PM. The applicant proposes to enlarge their existing paved parking lot and contractor's storage yard authorized under their current use permit by approximately 5,000 square feet for additional laydown and equipment storage space. The expansion would occur on the northern undeveloped parcel and involves a combined 820 cubic yards of soil cut and fill. The proposed expansion area is shown in green on the site plan and is visible on the right side of the image. New retaining walls are proposed but would not exceed six feet in height, and these new retaining walls, along with new fencing, would match the existing allen block retaining wall and brown slat chain-link fence. No expansion of the existing structure is proposed, and as part of the applicant's requests, the three underlying parcels would be merged into a single parcel. Additionally, no, no trees are proposed to be removed as part of this project. In order to approve the use permit request, the planning commission must consider and give regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures, and to the general plan and specific plans for the area in question, and determine whether or not the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood, or whether it will be injurious or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city. Additionally, no use permit shall be granted for any conditional use in the SCRO-1 zoning district unless further special findings can be made. Detailed analysis for each finding is provided within Exhibit A of the draft's resolution, but generally, the project complies with the findings required under Brisbane Municipal Code Chapter 17.40 and Brisbane Municipal Code Section 17.16.060. The use is consistent with the mixed commercial and residential character of the Southwest Bay Shore subarea, the SCRO-1 zoning district, and the recent use of the site since at least 2006 as a contractor's storage yard. It is also consistent with general plan policies and programs pertaining to conservation, community health, and safety. The proposed expansion of the contractor's storage yard would not be detrimental to health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood, nor be injurious or detrimental to property improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city, since the expansion would occur to the north, away from the nearest developed parcels, and MK Pipelines, Inc. has been operating under their current use permit for over nine years with no code enforcement complaints or violations. No additional measures are necessary to protect workers from noise generated by traffic on Bay Shore Boulevard, and previous modifications were made to address safe ingress and egress from the site under their current use permit. Grading in excess of five cubic yards requires issuance of a grading permit from the city engineer. Planning commission review of a grading application for a grading permit is also required for certain grading applications as specified under Brisbane Municipal Code Section 15.01.110. For this project, planning commission review is required, since the grading will be performed on a parcel located within the boundaries of the San Bruno Mountain, excuse me, San Bruno Mountain HCP. While the city engineers authorized to issue the grading permit for this project, the commission must consider the following potential impacts of the proposed grading operation and make a recommendation to the city engineer. One, will the proposed grading be designed to reflect or fit comfortably with the site context and natural topography? Two, will the proposed grading be designed to ensure that retaining walls visible to the public are designed to be as visually unobtrusive as possible? Three, will the proposed grading be designed to minimize removal of existing street trees, any California Bay Laurel, coast live oak, or California buckeye trees, or three or more mature trees of any species on the same site? And four, where removal of existing trees is necessary, will the landscape plan for the project include the planting of appropriate replacement trees? The proposed grading is minimized to the footprint of the new paved storage area located on the northern corner of the site. While the overall slope is 46%, the approximate natural slope in the area to be graded is closer to 15%, and the new storage area will be at the same level as the existing paved storage area. Exposed retaining walls required both below and behind the new storage area would not exceed six feet when measured from grade to the top of the wall. The plan on the right includes three sections of the proposed retaining walls, which are dimensioned to be less than six feet tall, while the image on the left depicts an existing retaining wall on the project site, which is an accurate representation of how the new retaining walls will look. No street trees or protected trees are proposed to be removed, and with adoption of the draft HCP operating program, the proposed grading would comply with the terms of the HCP agreement and Section 10A permit. A geotechnical report, which is a subsurface soil testing and exploration analysis, an attachment F to the staff report, was transmitted along with the plans for city review and includes a number of recommendations specific to the site. Condition of approval K requires a licensed soil, soils or geotechnical engineer to submit a final grading or final grading or observation report to the city, summarizing conformance of the grading operations to the geotechnical report prior to construction of the paved yard and retaining As required by the general plan and the H C P, a biological resources assessment of the site was conducted consistent with the methodology adopted by the plan operator or San Mateo County and attached to the staff report. An H C P operating program also attached to the staff report was drafted based on the specific findings of the assessment and circulated for review by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service and the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Neither agency raised issue with the conclusions of the biological assessment. Based on the biological resource assessment's finding of no larval habitat or nectarine plants for the butterflies protected by the H C P, no onsite habitat restoration is proposed for the site. Consistent with the H C P's requirements for administrative parcel two dash oh three, Brisbane Acres, the draft operating program requires payment of a fee to fund habitat acquisition elsewhere in the H C P. This fee will be required prior to building permit issuance for the retaining walls. The property owner must also become a signatory to the H C P agreement, including the requirement to participate in the H C P funding program, which must be recorded with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office prior to permit final. In closing, this application has been routed to the applicable city departments, including Public Works, Building, Fire, and the city attorney. The biological assessment and draft operating program were transmitted to the A C P plan operator, U S Fish and Wildlife Service, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Conditions of approval addressing potential stormwater discharges, material storage, and indemnification, among others, have been added or modified based on the comments received. This concludes staff presentation with a recommendation of approval of use permit twenty twenty-two dash U P dash seven, grading review twenty twenty-two dash E X dash five, lot merger twenty twenty-two dash L L A dash three, habitat conservation plan compliance twenty twenty-two dash H C P one by adoption of the attached resolution. Any questions at this time?
None for staff, thank you.
None at this time, thank you.
I have some questions for staff. One was...
Through the chair, is your mic on?
Sorry, apologize. A few questions maybe for staff. One was, storm runoff was considered in, you know, in the plan by other agencies or by other departments?
The city engineer.
Yep.
And a stormwater checklist was submitted as part of the application as well.
As well as the city engineer reviewed the engineering recommendations for that six-foot retaining wall would be adequate for...
That is correct.
Okay. I also had a question regarding the bio study. That firm, was that recommended by the city, or is that the usual firm that's, you know, utilized for evaluation and assessment?
The city maintains a short list of qualified firms, and they're basically on a rotation, and Coast Riddicology was the one up this time.
Okay. Is there any times when like, like, two firms are, you know, used for like, you know, as a second opinion or anything like that?
Not to my knowledge, in the past, though.
The only time that's done is if the developer hires their own consultant, and then the city will hire someone to do an independent review, but the city does not prepare two independent reviews for these kind of projects.
And my last question was, there weren't any renderings of like, the area to be graded, you know, for a different perspective or visualization?
Well, if we go back to the, it was like the street image that shows the existing yard, you can see kind of it's somewhat of a fighter in the right. I'll pull it up for you, but that's visually, it'll look fairly similar to what's already there, just...
But not to the point of like, where, you know, how much area will be graded or removed?
Yeah, let me pull up the image here. So, if you look at this image here, the, on the right, that's kind of where the grading would occur, and it'll be probably a little bit lower to match the existing level of the yard, but what you're going to see is a brown slat fence screening in the yard. You're not likely to see the retaining wall behind, you're going to see a retaining wall in the front, but that'll also look like this retaining wall here. This is the allen block wall with the brown slat fence on it. So visually, it's, it won't look significantly different than what's already there.
There's like a toe of part of that, that area that's going to be graded, right? And just like, is there, do we have an idea of like, how many feet would be, you know, be moved from that area, you know, before it gets really steep?
So if you look on this slide as well, there's, there's the conceptual grading plan, and it indicates the existing toe in this area here.
Right.
I don't believe it's dimensioned here, but that's a, for, for right now, that's kind of the approximation of the proposal as it is.
Yeah, no, for, given my ignorance in terms of like, understanding topographical maps.
Yeah, so the existing toe, the line is drawn there, but I don't have an accurate scale on this, and it's not, not dimensioned this, this right here. The, if you're concerned about how close it is, there are, there is a recommendation in the geotechnical report about maintaining, I believe, an eight-foot buffer between the existing toe and the retaining walls. And as I mentioned, there is a condition of approval to have that final observation report to make sure recommendations are followed.
Okay. I do have some questions, actually, raised by your comments. And I'm not sure how to ask this question. I really am asking for education, or at least an explanation. In the process of the applicant proposing this, and the city looking at it, and then the staff proposing some findings, when is how much engineering done by the city or by someone impartial to give the public some level of comfort level that the grading is not going to jeopardize the stability of that hillside? It's a pretty steep hillside.
So currently, the geotechnical report attached to the staff report has findings, and in summary, it's if the recommendations of the report are followed, there shouldn't be any significant impact for landslide. That's kind of the biggest concern for that site.
And who's, who's, who did the engineering that that's based on?
The applicant hired an engineer, and obviously, it was reviewed by the city engineer as well.
And is, thank you, and is there, is there provision or allowance at some point for the city to, pardon me, to revisit that when it comes time to actually do the work, or to require any further reporting or further engineering?
So there is a provision in the municipal code under the grading ordinance that the planning commission may recommend that the geotechnical report is peer reviewed. So that would be a recommendation you could make, and the city engineer will have the geotechnical report peer reviewed at time of building permit and grading permit to make sure that the peer review is in line with his conclusions.
And what does that, that peer review look like?
Through the, through the chair, we're talking about here is basically, in the normal course of events, the city engineer, who's a licensed engineer, obviously, he reviews these reports, he has the ability to send them out for peer review. The city has a consultant firm that we use through our building division that he can have them review reports if he feels they're complicated, technically challenging, and he will do that. If it's something that in his professional scope and opinion, he's comfortable reviewing, he will, he will, again, based on his licensing to the state of California, he, he will review that and make his professional judgment.
But the commission, I'm asking because we no longer have the same purview of our grading as we used to, so I just want to make sure I'm clear about what our, what our rights and responsibilities are in this regard about grading permits. Is it within our purview to be able to ask or request for that peer review to occur, or is that solely within discretion of the city engineer?
You can ask the city engineer to have that performed. It's his, it's ultimately his, he'll be the one to implement that and review it. We're not, the peer review aspect does not come back to the planning commission. That's a technical issue for the city engineer.
But we can ask or request that be done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was totally unclear about that under the new, the new process. Thanks.
Commissioner, any other... All right. Like to open the public hearing, then, and applicant, has it any comments or presentation?
I have no comments. I have nothing to add.
Okay. Then...
Oh, one comment, Jeremiah.
If you don't mind stepping to the podium, thank you.
It's just a small one I picked up. You mentioned we have six hundred and seventy thousand square feet. I wish we had fifteen acres, it's sixty-seven thousand square feet, just in case. I think there is fifteen acres next to us, up towards City Hall, but that's not ours. The lots are approximately twenty thou, two thousand square feet each, so for a total of sixty-six thousand. And to answer your question earlier on, very early on in the process, Jeremiah steered us towards getting a geotechnical report. It's twenty-eight pages long, it's attached in there. This is a consulting firm from San Francisco that's familiar with the area and has done some in this area, and he's familiar with the landslide and the history of it, and he's prepared his report based on this. We've conducted boreings at the site, ten-foot deep, at about sixteen locations, and we had a permit from county of San Mateo, and cleared and grubbed the site, and he's based his report based on those boreings. So there may be additional engineering, and we intend to retain him throughout the course of the grading operations to perform compaction testing and observation. That's part of his package.
Is that the Coast Riddicology? Is that the Coast Riddicology report? No, that's the bio assessment.
That's the bio assessment.
May I ask, like, do you have, can you give me, can you give us an idea of like, the amount of area that is going to require to be graded?
It's five thousand square feet, but it's not a perfect rectangle. It's approximately going to be a hundred foot wide, it's going to be occurring throughout the length of the frontage, which is a hundred feet, and up to fifty feet back from the front of the property. But there is one corner of the property that has a very steep hillside, so we are going to leave him that piece alone. It's too, it's too steep. So basically, a hundred by fifty with a carve out on the northwest side.
So do you stop, I'm sorry, excuse me, do you stop the grading?
About fifty foot back.
When it becomes two, when it becomes...
Well, I think eight foot back from the toe of the hill, we stopped the grading there.
Okay.
And we are a civil engineering contractor as well, so we will be doing this work ourselves in conjunction with our consultant, who will be there to observe.
I have a couple of questions. One, Jeremiah, can you put up page one oh eight of your staff report? I wanted to ask the applicant's question.
You have to give me a moment to pull that.
Oh, okay. Essentially, it's photos that you submitted of the hillside, so I just wanted to ask when those photos were taken. It shows a lot of dead weed and brush, so I just wanted to make sure when that was taken and whether that area has been cleared of things like that that could pose a fire risk.
Okay, I'm just not familiar with which photograph you were looking at.
I think it was included in the, my presentation.
Yeah, so page, I just wanted to refer to him again, page one oh eight.
I have no information to share.
Yes, right here. So these photos, when was this taken?
I did not take that photo. That was your biologist.
Those photos were from the bio assessment, which were done in spring of twenty twenty two.
Spring of twenty twenty-two, so...
Around April or May.
Okay, and do your records show that, was there any clearing of this area since then, or in, what was the most recent?
We have done no clearing of that area, and based from what I'm looking at there, that's from the roadway, there is a roadway, an old roadway, I forget the name of it, runs across the top of our property. What you're looking at right there, I believe, may not even be in our property. Our property doesn't stretch all the way to the road at the top. The property stretches two hundred and twenty-two feet back from Bay Shore Boulevard. And again, I'm only guessing, standing from the, wherever that person took that photograph, I presume it was the roadway. There is an old dirt track roadway across the top of the lots, across half of all the lots, so that, what you're looking at there, that dead bush may not even be ours.
But we don't know.
I have done no clearing on my lot, if that's your question. I've never been required to do any clearing by the fire department, they've never asked. We do a ten-foot clear around our boundary at the bottom every year. We get inspected twice a year by the local fire department. In our ten years of operation, they've never cited us for...
So you've never been required by the city to do any weed abatement or anything?
Fire department, no, or the city, no.
No? Okay. And Jeremiah, so this photo, I mean, do we, do we know, okay, so the applicant is unsure if this is even on his property, is there any way for us to know? I mean, or I don't understand why it was taken then, so...
I, well, I, that happened at the time, I believe, you were initially doing your H C P survey, and I elected not to be part of that initially at the time, and they asked for permission and for, to extend insurance to climb down the hillside to take photographs, and I declined and permission to come on the property at the time, because we were not going participating in the agreement. We now are participating in the agreement. So I have to assume where that person is standing, that photograph is not in my property, because we didn't actually sign the waiver form for him to enter.
And definitively, we would have to go back to Coast Riddicology to see where the photo was taken. The viewpoint might just be trying to observe the property, so it's unclear if it's on the property or just looking at the property.
And regarding slope stability, so I went through your geotechnical report, and, you know, frankly, after going through it, I have more questions, you know, than answers, you know, provided to me, because the report acknowledges that what you plan to do will have some, you know, impact, although albeit minimal, to the stability of the hillside. It also states that the minimal impact will be dependent upon the recommendations being carried out. So that would have to be, you know, everything would be, have to be done correctly, but then my other concern is that the report also has a lot of, let me see, caveats. For example, it says, you know, "Review of the existing foundation elements or retaining walls was beyond the scope of our services. A detailed study of seismic hazards is beyond the scope of this report." "The civil aspects of drainage systems are beyond the scopes of the services, you know, of what they're providing." And it says, "A complete study of the site and potential slope instability is beyond the scope of this report." So I just kept on reading things like that, and I'm wondering, what is this report really telling me? It's, you know, I'm left with a lot of questions because it's acknowledging this area has a history of landslides and slope instability, but yet it's not giving me, it's not giving me a good feeling that if we, you know, allow this to go through, your activity will not help this slope's instability. I mean, it, the geological report admits it'll have impact, negative impact, albeit minimal, but then we can't even be sure if we can trust this report because there's so many things that they didn't do, so, you know?
There's, there's a lot of things that it nukes are not required to do it for a car lot, a lot of the things that he mentioned in his report are for buildings and structures, or at least some of the items, they're not required to be carried out in the purview of a grading permit. That's why, he would not observe the civil for drainage, that's not part of his purview. We have a civil engineer, and we've done our stormwater checklist.
But in terms of your use permit, we have to decide whether the use that you want to do will have an injurious effect on the residents and the neighboring property.
Yes.
So that has to be our consideration, so allowing you to do it, allowing you to have this activity and prepare for it, is that going to harm your neighbors? Is that going to harm, you know, adjacent properties? And it looks like from the...
That's a separate question to what you asked about his carve outs in his report, that's a separate question.
Well, I mean, I think they go hand in hand because, because authorizing the use permit will authorize you to do everything that you're proposing to do, which will have impact on the stability of the adjacent areas. So that is, that is a concern for me, and that was a concern raised by a couple of the residents that submitted, you know, letters to us, so it's something that we have to So anybody else want to comment or chime in on that?
No, I share that concern about the onsite, you know, in the moment of construction implementation of those geotechnical reports' recommendations as to how it really works, which is why I might, which is why I'd asked the question earlier about whether... As to how it really works, which is why I might, which is why I'd asked the question earlier about whether it might, this might be one of those instances, because the, the hillside is is a potentially problematic one to, to ask for, for peer review of this, this particular report to see if there are any other, if anybody else has any differing conclusions as to the extent of the danger and the extent of the impact this project will have on it.
Are we looking at two different things? I mean, okay, in, in terms of grading review, you know, we don't seem to have a lot of saying that, but correct me, staff, if I'm wrong, but in terms of us granting a use permit, we could make contingencies and, I mean, we, we can ask for these, any safety questions we have to be answered. Am I not wrong there?
As, as it relates to the use permit findings being detrimental to the.
Yes. So if we find that what was submitted is insufficient for us to decide on, on this permit, we, we can ask for more. And if we're not provided more, I think in the absence of it, I mean, I mean, I'm not comfortable with making a decision when I don't have all the facts.
As it relates to the, the stormwater, a stormwater checklist was submitted and the, under the, the, the permit for the county, this threshold is below what a regulated project would be for a paved area. So they, they are in compliance with the stormwater permit at this size. They're not required to do any onsite stormwater treatment. And so it's ultimately just the, kind of the, the final drainage onsite to make sure that's not it's handled, you know, properly to the, the city's system. It's not going to create erosion problems on the site or elsewhere.
I'm, I'm just concerned overall with, with the activity that is going to be occurring there. I think it's, it's, it's just adding to the stability of that, you know, of that steep hillside. I mean, like, you know, there's no one saying that, oh, what we're going to do is we're going to shore it up. It's going to actually, you know, strengthen that hillside. It's, it's actually going to impact it, you know, however minimally supposedly they, they say, but we don't know. I mean, you know, the, I, I don't think the report here is adequate for us to make that determination.
I have, yeah, um, you know, similar concerns when I reviewed and read that report regarding the instability. And now I understand it's because, since it was for a grading permit that perhaps the engineers didn't have to calculate, you know, further, you know, on, on those questions that we have. But that still leads us with the question of, you know, that makes that hill, especially since it has a history of, of previous landslide, you know, of, by grading that area, if it will contribute to the instability of, you know, of that area. One question, in the, in the other parts of your lot, where you have that retaining wall and stuff, was that graded too in the past? And then the.
When we moved into it, the back retaining wall was already there and the paving was already present. We repaved it. The front retaining wall we put in there, it was just a drop off that was starting to erode. So we put in the front allen brock retaining wall. But the back was existing and the paving was existing.
And yeah, and just, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but to me, just like a six foot retaining wall for.
Well, it's a maximum of six foot. It's, yeah, I think if you look at a section, some of it's four foot and, and I think even in one corner it's three foot. So we've allowed for six foot, yeah, we've allowed for six foot just to be safe. But I think, I think the biggest cut we have there is five foot.
And then just a side question was, what, the, the, the biological survey that you requested, was that that firm hired, you know, through the city or just on your own?
Yeah, it's what the city requested. Yeah, the city put out a, a tender request and they got some in from their pool of biologists. They conducted the report. The city paid the biologists and I paid the city.
Oh, I see.
I did not have any part of that process. We basically just let them into the site and that's about all we did.
I, I just, one concern I had was just reading the bio, I think that the biologists, biological lists, when they surveyed the site, it was like for four hours, you know, to come up with this, all this information. And to me, that seems like a very short and small sample size, you know, to assess like nesting habits or, you know, other wildlife that's, you know.
We had to do an additional report for nesting habits for San Mateo County, I believe Jeremiah has that. That's an additional report. We at NK had to contract with a separate consultant to do a nesting report.
And is that the one that suggested that, you know, for those two bird species, that there's a moderate possibility of, you know, of, of nesting.
I believe that's in the biological assessment. The, the assessment is, you know, under the parameters of the, the HCP, which is primarily for the protected butterfly species, but it does look at any other species with special, special status on them. And the study is performed in August, sometimes May, when it's the, the bloom season for the, the plants that are the host plants for, for the butterflies. So it's the, the oppor, the most opportune time to find the, the butterfly species is when the survey is performed.
My concern is because, yeah, you know, obviously not for, only for the butterflies, but for like the wildlife, you know, when you have that four hour just sample there, like. I live in the acres as well. And, you know, I have a red tail hawk and their nest, you know, for the last couple of years, you know, which is pretty magnificent in a eucalyptus tree, which is probably not, you know, important to, you know, to save, but it's important for that bird as well as owls and even the caulia that comes down, but, and the wild parrots that come to, you know, to our house. But they're only there briefly, you know, just for a split second, you know, for a few minutes of time. And otherwise you wouldn't even notice that they're, that they're there. So when you go and survey some area for four hours, just a small fragment of time, you know, to make this evaluation, I sometimes have some concerns.
I believe one reason why it may have just took them four hours is before I became owner of that property, the city had carried out the survey with the same biologists. That was owned by somebody else and they had done that survey.
I see.
So they literally were doing a survey on the same property within 12 months of the previous one. So they probably had a lot of background information already. It would be my guess why.
Additionally, as it relates to perhaps for, for birds and nesting, they're looking for a nesting habitat. So they're not necessarily looking for actual nests on the site or to see, you know, birds coming in. They're looking for suitable nesting habitat, which is something they can kind of observe more quickly.
At the moment, on the area that we're grading from San Mateo County Parks Evan down there, we've actually already cleared and grubbed the area that is going to be graded or proposed to be graded. So there is actually no trees or bushes or shrubs there on the area that's going to be impacted.
Okay.
Of the property, we are impacting about 25% of the total. 75% is going to be left as it is. So the area that we propose to work on is already cleared and grubbed.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
No further questions.
Thank you. May I open to the, any call in comments? Call in by the teleconference number or by Zoom?
All right, so the slide's up. I'll start the timer. And I do believe we have Michelle Salmon. Uh, go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, honorable commission, I have a lot of things to say about this. And Jeremiah, can you show that very first slide you showed that showed the aerial view of this site? Including where the peninsula goes out a little bit into the lagoon. Before I was born, and I was born a long time ago, and I've lived in Brisbane all my life. This was the largest landslide that has ever been recorded that I know of or that's been recorded on San Bruno Mountain. And the slide happened when they just, there used to be a road that went up San Francisco Street and across the backside of Tulare Hill and met up with Anis Road and continued on to a tunnel that went south. And that was the major route south. Looking at this picture, you can see the yellow area and you can see the little peninsula that sticks out into the lagoon. That area that sticks out into the lagoon is actually where San Bruno Mountain historically actually still touches the bay. But when they decided to make an alternate route to the little road that you can actually see a little bit right by the backside of the houses on Tulare and then over here on, on the other side. When they decided to build a old Bay Shore Boulevard, they excavated along here. And this area was very steep and they took out the excavation in order to be able to build the road. And it triggered a massive slide that started all the way up at the backside of Tulare and, and down into the bay. And you can see in this photograph, the darkened area. That is the area that was taken out in that slide. And it, I don't know the exact year. It should be in the geotechnical report. It was massive, massive, because they removed the underpinnings that held this up. San Bruno Mountain is a clay latisal soil that is extremely subject to super saturation and then sliding. I think all of us were very aware of what happened on December 31st, 2022, with the amount of rainfall we had and the massive slides that happened in Firth Park, Firth Canyon, Al Canyon and, and Buckeye Canyon. And those, some of those same, the slides in Firth Canyon and also what in Costanya's Canyon happened in 1982 as well, when we had heavy rainfall. And with climate change, we are going to have more rainfall of that nature and more catastrophic events. If you think back to 2006, we had quite a lot of rain in those years and Humboldt Road slid out as well as a massive landslide above Liptman School. An area that was developed with using the cut and fill method that we're talking about right now. And that slide happened, I believe in March or April and did not stop moving until August, August. And then it required a multimillion dollar project to stabilize that hill and to secure the safety of the school. And I know this is a lot of history for you to absorb. The history really is important because it really does impact the decision you're about to make. I have serious concerns about grading 820 cubic yards in this, of, of material in this area. That's approximately between 50 and 82 dump trucks full of material. They did an excavation of its nature across the street from us on Sierra Point Road when they built the house that's there at 110 Sierra Point or 112, whatever address is. They took out probably 10 dump trucks full of soil. And they built, had to build a 30 foot retaining wall with French drains to accommodate building a moderate sized house. You're talking a six foot retaining wall? Uh, maybe two six foot retaining walls? I, I'm sorry, but a slope of 46 degrees? And that's all you're willing to do? The reason the other area only has 15 degrees of slope is because it all slid out. And you, the, where the current building is, is actually in the bowl of the slide. Just south of the site where the building is, you will see the foundation of a house that was there or a building that was there that was destroyed in that slide. And, and subsequent material coming down off the hill. So I have a really hard time with the idea of doing this. Above and beyond that, obviously I've been on San Bruno Mountain watch for several years and I'm very familiar with the HC, very familiar with the HCP. And while the HCP Habitat Conservation Plan is primarily concerned with the, the endangered butterfly species, the mission blue, the elephant and the cliffy. Really, what we need to worry about protecting is the entire natural habitat. And I don't feel four hours of bio assessment is at all comprehensive for this area in preserving the natural habitat. And when you say that, that the, the assessment was done in May or June or August or whenever. You know, in 2021, the lupin emerged early because of the heavy rains and retreated early. So it may not have been visible. Same thing with the viola or any of the other specific species involved as host plants for the three endangered butterflies. But that's not all we're willing to protect. Just because those three are covered by the Endangered Species Act and the Habitat Conservation Plan that specifically addressed the killing of those species to be able to recreate habitat elsewhere and, and enable development. Does it mean that we are not responsible for protecting the entire habitat? Dr. Eo Wilson, now deceased, but foremost biodiversity expert in the world at the time, cited San Bruno Mountain as one of the 18 biodiversity hotspots in the world worthy of saving. And he was not just talking about the butterflies. He was talking about the living, breathing habitat. And I think that's really important. And I think that the history of the area as well as the propensity, almost guaranteed propensity of a massive slide also occurring in the area when you further erode the footing of that hillside is very real. And yes, you might be away from people who have property there and property there, but where is all that debris going to go? It's going to go on Bay Shore Boulevard and into the lagoon. I really don't know how many of you have seen or experienced the effects of the slides that happened on January 31st. I mean, December 31st to 2020. And the massive, massive amount of material that came down off of San Bruno Mountain and greatly impacted the citizens of Brisbane as well as the traffic on Bay Shore everywhere. So I really, I'm sorry, the, the applicant is very glib and has an answer for everything. But I'm sorry, I don't feel this is an adequate assessment. I don't feel it's an adequate biological assessment. And I certainly don't feel that there was, was an adequate engineering assessment, as pointed out by Commissioner Seislan. And I don't, I don't think you should make a decision now. I think that you need a lot more information and a lot more engineering before you make this massive amount of decision, decision on this. This has severe impacts. And I'm sorry, climate change is a reality and we are going to continue to have extreme weather, both in terms of flooding and fire. And this further exasperates the risk to not just the hillside and the habitat, but to the people, because you will not have ingress and egress if you take out Old Bay Shore Boulevard. And when, when the slide happened in 1982, or January of 83, I can't remember the exact date. But we weren't able to leave Brisbane. Bay Shore was flooded from that. You could not leave by San Bruno Avenue, the backside of the hill. You could not leave by visitation. It was all underwater. And I think that a lesson is to be learned from history and that we don't repeat the mistakes made in the past in the interest of one project that I don't feel is well defined or well engineered. So I really appreciate your diligence in looking into this. And believe me, if this does go to the council, it will be appealed because this is not, while you may think it's feasible, feasible, it's not reasonable and it's not sustainable for the next 50 years or even the next 20 years. So I really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other callers or?
There are no other hands raised, but since we moved slides for Michelle, I'm going to go back to the call in number and want to give up 30 seconds?
Sure. And in the meantime, there were two written communications. And one had, one expressed concerns regarding the engineering report. And the other expressed the concerns regarding the habitat and the biologic impact. Were there any other communications sent?
No, there was not. 10 seconds. 10 seconds. No one else has raised their hand.
Right. Um, okay. Um, so.
Through the chair, we'll need a motion to close.
Yep. I'll move to close the public hearing.
One more, was there a comment? A loud comment, a comment before we close.
Yes, and maybe I misunderstood something, but I didn't add something. There's been a couple of comments about the biologic and biologic survey, but what people, maybe they do understand the callers and the letters, the biologic survey is not something I've chosen. The parameters and the scope of which is not something I've chosen. That's been chosen by the city and the city chooses their biologist and it complies with the plan that the city has chosen. Some of the complaints or some of the concerns are that maybe the HCP doesn't go far enough or strong enough or is not encompassing enough. But again, that's not something I have any control over. We can only meet the requirements of the HCP as adopted by the city. So I'm, whilst there may be concerns and very valid ones, they're not really applicable to this.
Right, no, thank you.
They're a separate comment.
Understood, and I think that applies not only probably for the biologic um, uh, assessment or evaluation of, you know, maybe not going further enough, similar to the engineering, you know, um, evaluation.
Yeah.
Or assessment because it was only towards the grading permit instead of, you know, possibly.
Hi, guys, hi, um, this is Christian Davis, the geotechnical engineer. Um, I, I just have a question. It's my understanding that the, the city engineer, who is a licensed civil engineer, at least um, has reviewed our report and, and found that it was adequate for the type of development that's being proposed and the type of cuts that are being proposed. And the city engineer is aware of the conditions of the hillside and history, which was discussed in our report. Um, and so just, is, is that, just to clarify, did the city engineer approve our report for his, in terms of to get a planning application or, or did they not review our report? Because we're reading a little bit of criticism that it was insufficient, but then the engineer may didn't feel that was uh, correct.
There, there's no approval of the, the grading or, or the geotech report at this time. It was reviewed as part of this request uh, by the city engineer and there were no additional questions or comments at this time. It will still come back to the grading engineer again when the grading permit is applied for.
Okay, but if, if they felt it was deficient.
If, if they had felt it was deficient, the city engineer would have requested additional information of the reporter of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
May I ask for a vote?
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Seisam?
Aye.
My motion passes with three ayes. Um, can we begin deliberations?
Yeah, I'll start. Um, so um, obviously I, I express some of my concerns as well as uh, you, you both have. And um, you know, I, I just feel as though there's, there's not enough, you know, information at this point to make a, a decision. For example, one, I, you know, I had concerns about potential fire hazards with the, you know, dead uh, debris up there. We're not quite sure who owns that property. Uh, you know, I'd like to um, pin that down, you know, and uh, if, if that area does belong to the applicant, I, I, I would like that area to be um, you know, a, a dress so that it doesn't impose a fire hazard uh, in the neighborhood. Um, the other issue is, is again, I'm not comfortable with the geotechnical report that was submitted. It doesn't, I, I don't have confidence that uh, that um, it, it, it won't contribute to the sliding problem, the soil instability that currently exists. Um, so I'd like more information on that. Uh, you know, I, you know, I, I, I don't know what, you know, you two feel, but I, I feel like perhaps, you know, we could continue the hearing until we get further information. Um, that would be where I am leaning towards.
Thank you. Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, I, I share Commissioner Seisam's concerns that, that we don't have um, a real comfort level as to the, the geotechnical aspects of this. And obviously none of the three of us is a geotechnical engineer. And this is the, the problem endemic to commissions like this is when, when do we think we have enough and what is our power under the new, the new structure of decision-making um, on grading permits and their accounting use permits? So continuing it for something is not something I'm opposed to, but continuing it for what and what more can we get and how do we get it? Uh, is it feasible? My question to you folks, rather than any motion yet, is, is it feasible to, to get that, that peer-reviewed geotechnical report as part of this process of arriving at our decision or is it only something we can impose as a condition once we approve or not approve the permit?
I think it could be uh, peer-reviewed through um, the city's. We have a geotechnical consultant who works for the building division or through the building division and for the city engineer. Um, obviously that would have to be at the applicant's cost as well, and that's just part of the, part of the review process. What I'm hearing is there's maybe two different things I'm hearing from Commissioner Seisam that you're seeing that as a precursor to a use permit finding. And I think what Commissioner Gooding is talking about is if this were just a straight grading permit where whatever thoughts you had about a grading plan are just advisory to the city engineer. So it sounds like it's coming in the bucket of something that's, that's determinative of the use permit finding and you want that before you were to make a decision on the use permit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm addressing this as a use permit approval.
And to clarify, my, my comment, I, I was inquiring to, to be educated as to whether we're, whether our only option were to simply make it a, a condition of, of, of an approval of the permit to get peer-reviewed or my preference would be that we get it peer-reviewed and then be able to revisit the issue with as much information as we can get from that. Um, that's my preference, but, but that's.
Well, again, if it's in the context of a use permit and you're not going to make the findings for approval based on the information you have in front of you, then you wouldn't condition for that, the finding would not be conditional, you need to have enough information to make a finding of approval. So if as a group you don't have that, then we need to know what information you require to uh, uh, put you in that position.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, oh, Commissioner Lau, okay. So I, the way I see this, I, I think there's at least two options, at le, at least for me. Um, you know, without any additional information, if we don't continue, I'm, I'm inclined to move to, to reject uh, you know, the, the applicant's request. Um, if we continue, like I said, uh, you know, I will want more, and this is as to the use permit, I will want more information to determine that what is being proposed will be safe for the surrounding neighborhoods, uh, you know, in terms of the, any sliding issues or whatever. One, and, and two, I want to confirm if, if which part of the hillside they own and if it contains all the debris that I'm concerned about because it's a fire hazard. And if they own it, then if I'm going to approve the use permit, I want them to take care of it. So those are the two things that's an issue for me.
And I, I share the same concerns, especially with the use uh, permit and regarding the safety and the instab, potential instability. Um, I also have concerns or reservations regarding the biological um, assessment. But, but apparently that assessment satisfies the city's requirement for that.
Not only does it satisfy, satisfy the city's requirements under the procedures, but it was reviewed by U.S. Fish and Wildlife as well as the, the state Fish and Wildlife and they had no comments on the, the biological assessment or the, the draft operating program. Uh, presently, this, this property doesn't have a draft operating program. It's kind of under the sort of maybe you might call it the umbrella one for the Brisbane Acres, but this uh, approval here would, would establish a operating program specific to this property uh, that has uh, obligations and requirements to do uh, removal of a invasive species, uh, things of that nature. And, and to your point, Commissioner Seisam, the, the city does have, uh, they actually have almost two different sort of weed abatement ordinances. One is kind of related to undeveloped parcels and one is kind of what you think of for developed parcels. And I did speak with the, uh, one of our fire inspectors specific about this property today and uh, he did not raise any particular concerns about fire hazard on this property.
Well, yes, yeah, and, and we did exchange emails about that, except for I wasn't sure because I thought the way we left it, you weren't sure if, if this is the current state of the property, if perhaps afterwards the applicant did clear the land, but according from, based upon his statement, he said he's, he's not done any of that. So this is apparently how it, it probably looks, you know, and if it looks like this, I'm a little concerned that I think something should be done.
The uh, fire would have been out there in around June of this month. They go out, the, the beginning of summer, they go out through the entire city to, to do a kind of a windshield survey. So the, my discussion with the, the fire inspector probably would have been a more, more recent recollection of the property than that, that photograph.
So did any of our workers do anything to that hillside?
I, I'm not aware if our workers did anything to the hillside.
Because the applicant is saying he, he hasn't, so.
But the, I'll just reiterate that the fire inspector said he, there was not concern for fire hazard.
The city would not have performed work on private property without having notified the property owner, given them the opportunity to do the work. And the last resort is for the city to do work and then bill the property owner. So based on the inspection this year and weekend, if this is going to be continued, we will certainly get some, something in writing from the, from the fire marshal about the results of the inspection for your, for your um, review. But I, I would certainly be nervous about the commission putting themselves in the sort of serving as fire marshal or fire inspector because that is of North County Fire Function. They do this every year. There are city ordinances that, that require activity and so you'd have to, I suspect you'd have to have something above and beyond the normal condition where you're going to impose a requirement higher than any other property in Brisbane.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Clarify one comment, but I also mentioned I didn't do no clearing. It's because, not that I don't want to do clearing, but I did not see any need or nothing that I can visibly see that requires or poses that. And we do see the fire marshal actually twice a year to visit. He actually visits our property twice a year, not, not once a year. And he conducts a review of all of it. So when I said we haven't done nothing, it's because there has been nothing visible or we walk occasionally, there's nothing that we see. And that's why I had concerns over the photographs we were looking at. I believe they are outside of our property.
Another clarification, did you also mention that you've kind of cleared that area where, that the area that's going to be graded already? So that's already been cleared?
Correct, yes, we ran, and that was part of why we had to do the nesting bird survey and we also had Evan from Sammont Hill Parks to do a clearing grub in order to prepare a topo, in order to prepare the civil drawings.
Okay, so it's just dirt right now?
It, it is dirt and it's um, all been, there's erosion control netting and erosion controlled blankets. Uh, it's almost grass again.
Thank you.
That would have been part of the site activity report uh, that the county reviews since it's on, uh, since it's within the HCP. So that was required prior to just the, the grubbing and clearing to, to, to do the um, the boreholes.
I, currently if we, if, I, I don't, my opinion is I don't have enough information regarding the um, engineering aspect in terms of, and I would be inclined if, you know, if I had, if we had the vote to approve or decline uh, tonight, you know, I would not be to approve um, because of lack of uh, information.
So what, what vehicle are we inclined to, to agree on? Is it, would it be a continuance with, with specific information requested or, or denial of the applicant do what they think is best or what's the, what's your preferences?
Uh, Steph, so if, if we were to deny, the applicant would have the option to resubmit?
The applicant could appeal. Um, can't resubmit for another year. He'd be, yeah, he would, wouldn't, wouldn't I be able to reapply for a year?
Would the other option be to continue um, with the request of a additional engineering review with the concerns that were raised?
I mean, if, if the applicant is inclined, I, I, I'm sure there will be extra costs. So I guess it would depend if we continue, if the applicant would want to submit the additional information because I, what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners is what we're provided with, we just don't feel as we have enough information to address the safety and uh, aspect that we have to consider whether this use permit would, would be, would cause an injurious effect on the residents and, and the surrounding area, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about process and procedure at this point, just to get, to get some closure on this that makes, makes sense. Um, staff, my question would be, is it a feasible vehicle to, to use to continue with the request for more technical, geotechnical information? Um, and if the applicant, I assume, just thinking out loud, if the applicant chooses not to, not to fund that, then we would act on whatever information we have available when we next meet on the issue um, with whatever result that would be.
Yeah, what we would be doing is looking at someone to peer review this study.
Yeah.
Um, and they'll make their own determinations as to its adequacy or not adequacy, recommendations, whatever. Um, but yes, that would be up to the applicant to fund that. If he chose not to fund it, we wouldn't have any more information to bring back to you and you would make a decision based on the information available to you.
That, that strikes me at least as a, as a process that's clear. Um, that would, that would be my, my inclination as one of, one of three.
If that request was made for a peer review, would it be, the request would be, you know, not as just the, for a grading permit, you know, approval or?
Well, that's all, you're, you, what you have is a use in front of you.
Yes.
Right, that is, involves an open yard being created and some grading. So they're going to be looking at the geotechnical review of the site in the context of what is being proposed. They're not going to look at a future other use that's not being contemplated at this point because the geotechnical, the soil engineering, all the project design is to support a project. So it'll all be in the context of what is being proposed by the applicant. So the applicant is proposing grading, so that is going to be the, the world of the, you know, of what the geotechnical review is evaluating. You know, look at the previous site conditions and whatever risk of upset or landslide or what have you, and that should be adequately characterized in the context of what is being proposed.
So those risks would be uh, as part of the value, as part of the assessment, uh, even though it's towards a grading permit, which?
Sure, because the grading, I mean, to the extent the grading could create a instability. I mean, that's really the question you're asking, right? That somehow what they're doing here with the grading context is creating instability. Um, that would be, I think, a fundamental question that any geotechnical investigation should be able to answer.
As well as if that six foot retaining wall is sufficient to, you know, support?
Yeah, that's part of, yeah, the engineering design, absolutely.
See, the geotechnical review has approved the use for what's currently designed. It's my understanding, if it goes onto grading permit, there's further engineering required at the grading permit level. The peer review goes on there, the walls have actually got to get engineered properly and submitted, or there is a process of engineering that goes outside the purview of this report. This report says that the walls should be adequate, that the grading can happen at that area. It identifies the landslide, it identifies everything that's happened there historically. What it is saying is that the use as a car lot is acceptable engineering and geologically wise. When it goes forward to grading, then there's further engineering has to come to support that. And if that engineering then does not support the retaining walls, then they will not allow me to proceed. The, the, the grading permit will not be issued. So this is one step. That's why this geological report is not fully inclusive of everything. When the grading permit is instituted, there is going to be more, there's going to be a lot more information. This is the initial step.
You're correct. I am.
This is like a conceptual grading plan that you're looking at now. And the geotech report, as the applicant said, kind of looked at the current use and looked at the soil conditions there for this use kind of conceptually. But as the applicant said, there still needs to be a grading permit applied for and approved by the city engineer. And those retaining walls do need engineering to show that they are capable of holding back the mountainside. So it's correct to what, as what Sean said, there's going to be more engineering required prior to the actual issuance of the permit that's going to have more information than what is currently before you now.
And I appreciate very much what Sean clarified, and I think he's probably right in terms of describing the process. And this sort of brings me back around my continued catch and discomfort with the changes to the grading permit process and the use permit process is that once this commission, as I understand it, process-wise, will have no further say in what happens once that further engineering is done beyond what we do here tonight unless we continue it for more information. And, you know, there's substantial, you know, legitimate public concern about the stability of this hillside for, you know, pretty good historical reasons. And I think this commission is struggling with not having, I'm not being flip, but the geotechnical report basically says this can be okay if it's done right. It's more than that, but that's the general tenor of it because there's more work to be done. And we are faced with a lot of discomfort about a comfort level of whether that can be done right based on what the next geotechnical report is going to say, or the next grading engineer report is going to say. It's an odd process that we're being asked to say yea or nay without all the information.
So if a request for a peer review for a grading permit would be essentially asking, similar to like a request for that engineering that you would be required for the second step regardless?
I don't believe that's true. Because you have, again, this is a preliminary review. You're using this preliminary review to make certain decisions, right? That are for purposes of your findings. You're clearly not comfortable with the results of this preliminary review to support the finding at the moment. So we would have someone look at this in the context of this level of preliminary review and basically see if they, if a peer reviewer reaches the same conclusion. And they may have the same conclusion that, yes, we believe it's going to be okay and X, Y, and Z need to be done in further engineering. It's not the practice to make an applicant fully design a project, especially if it's a discretionary review that you could end up denying anyway. That's not, it's in a way very similar to what you do on a, you approve a building. Well, you're going to be relying that the building is built pursuant to the building code and that the building plans will comply with the building code. We don't provide you full engineered drawings of a structure as part of a use permit or a design permit. It's, in my mind, no different. You have preliminary conceptual plans, you have requirements to meet the law, and you have technical review that will achieve whatever technical requirements are made. I understand your concern about the use permit findings, but to satisfy that, we're not talking about having him fully design this, engineer his grading plan and bring in a fully engineered grading plan before the commission. That's, to me, not the outcome of what our discussion would be. So I just want to make that kind of clear.
So essentially, I think what John is saying, the peer review, the person that's doing it, is not going to give us any more detailed information. So he's just a second opinion. So if we want additional information, we're not getting it through the peer review, we're just going to have to ask the applicant, get it from his geotechnical expert, you know? And he can decide, we can continue, and he can decide, I'm not going to give it to you, and then we wouldn't have that information, we would rule based upon that. You know, I think that's where we're left with, or we can decide now because I know how I'll vote right now. Because it's, the code says, we grant this use permit if we find that it won't be injurious to the residents or the neighborhood. I mean, if you can make, if you feel comfortable making that finding, then, then, okay. But I'm not, and, you know, so if we rule tonight, I want to prove it.
No, I agree that I don't think I can make that finding either, given the information at this time. I don't know exactly how much more a peer review of this would provide us with, but it's the only way forward that I can see. That leads to a yes potentially. So I guess I'm agreeing with you, but, you know.
I agree as well. So can we ask the applicant, you know, if they were able to provide a, showed engineering, you know, assess, you know, for as, to the level of a grading permit, that engineering report? Is that not even, not allowed to, you know, ask that or request that?
I would suggest if you're, if the applicant's willing to have this conversation with staff, the city engineer and our consulting engineer about what everyone agrees they can do at this juncture and what he's willing to proceed with based on, you know, where we are in the process. And either we come back with something that we, at a staff level at least, feel is reflective of your concerns, or we don't, because we can't agree as to what that would be.
Something I'm confused about with the process, and I kind of agree with John. I thought the purpose of this planning was that the proposed use or the expanded use met with the current use, and the current report and the concept meets with the zone. I was under the assumption that's what this meeting was for. And just like what John was mentioning, all of the other engineering happens afterwards. I don't have the qualifications Mr. Divas has. I don't have the qualifications the peer reviewer has. So I can spend $10,000 more with this guy, and $10,000 more with your peer view. Is there anybody in this room qualified to read the report? I'm not. I don't know how that gets us to the next step. I think John said it very clearly. It's like you're making a decision on a building right now, and you're asking the applicant to completely design the building, and you're asking me to give you a completely designed car lot, which may be rejected later.
I think, I think the difference is if the initial building, the preliminary design that was being submitted showed all these potential problems, like if you were even going to start it, it would start to kind of fall down, then, you know, that's where you stop, you know? I mean, normally, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to go into further details, but this preliminary report that was provided, it just like, my initial reaction was, it's bringing up a lot more questions than giving me answers that will make me feel confident because I'm looking at this and says, wow, he's really, I mean, I read this and I felt like he's not really comfortable with this report. I mean, it's, that's the feeling I got from reading it because he's, because, you know, he goes through the history of the slides and he says, oh, it might have a minimal impact, but however, I didn't do this, I didn't do this, I didn't do this. So, I mean, it's just a lot of questions.
Because he hasn't done those steps yet, those steps are for the later date.
Right, but the steps that he did go through causes concern, the answers that he's provided.
Okay, but his, his conclusion was that the site, based on its history, will support the proposed use. That's his conclusion. And that's what he clearly states, that the site and design will support the proposed use.
And I, I'm not oblivious to the quandary you see yourself in, but the one we're in is that we're obliged to determine whether or not this use will be injurious or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city. And we don't feel that we have enough information before us to make that particular finding, whether it's because of the way geotechnical engineers talk, or whether it's because of the extent of information that they think they are minimally obliged to provide to us at this stage, or what. Here we are. If the process is not great, it's the one that I'm stuck with.
Yes, because if this was approved, there is no, this doesn't come back to the planning commission at all.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, you know, we, yeah. I appreciate, no, I appreciate, you know, that you've followed all the steps, you know, for this initial process, you know, and completed that. Our concern is that, you know, yeah, if there was some building, then we saw that, you know, it could be potentially dangerous, you know, or it's like that, we wouldn't prove that. Kind of in the same realm here, you know, concerned about the safety for the community because we don't have that information. But once again, you know, that, but you've already, you know, satisfied all the requirements for this, you know, this first step in the process.
Through the chair, so the conditions of approval included with this state that it is approved provided the next steps are followed. So if the next steps are not followed, or the applicant is unable to follow them, say as it relates to the geotech or the engineering, then the approval kind of expires. So then that they, it's, you know, it is contingent upon them satisfying kind of the safety concerns for the city engineer. And if that can't be met or is not met, then this approval is no longer an approval. So that the expansion would not be able to occur.
That's true, Jeremiah, but if that was the case, then what would be our role? Because then if, you know, if the next person has to approve it, then you're clear, you don't have to make any ruling. You know, the next person will take care of it. If it doesn't, you know, if it's not going to work, then they won't approve it, you know? So, I mean, I don't know what our role is then if it's not to make that preliminary, you know, decision.
Yeah, if the decision is based off technical information, though, isn't it, you know, that's what we're relying on?
Well, it's a common, I mean, we're a quasi judicial body, you know? We can take into consideration technical information, lay witness testimony from like Michelle Salmon and others who have submitted letters of concern. So we take into consideration the whole body of evidence, so not just that report. I'm, I'm taking in, I'm, you know, from Dana Dilworth, from Emmett Cunningham, from Michelle Salmon. So we've heard their evidence, their anecdotal evidence, and we're looking at the staff report that's provided. And this geotechnical report, which, you know, actually added more concerns for me. So, you know, I think, I think, you know, those are all things that we are rightly able to consider, and based upon that, I'm not comfortable with approving this.
Is the applicant, like...
I think, I will just make a motion to continue it, and if the applicant wants to submit further information, he can, we can have another hearing. And if, because, you know, I don't want to prejudice him to having to refile in a year. And if, you know, he doesn't want to have another hearing, then, you know, then so be it, and, you know, but I think to give him the opportunity to continue the hearing. And maybe even, you know, there might be even further public comment that would enlighten us further as well, so.
I would support that as well.
As well, is there a motion?
Through the chair, we would need a date specific, 30 days with that. We have certain statutory time limits, I don't know what our Streamline Act requirement would be, Jeremiah.
If it's feasible, I mean, my wish would be to give the applicant as much time as he feels is necessary to do whatever he's inclined to do.
So continue it off calendar and we'll just readvertise it. That's fine, that's your option, you can do that.
And I don't want to necessarily rush it if more time is reasonably necessary to get stuff done. I'd rather do it right than do it fast.
Whatever that motion, is there a motion?
Yes, so whatever the date, let's, I make a motion to continue to the date that I think staff will specify here.
No, it'll just be, you continue it off calendar to be readvertised.
Okay, I will make that motion for continuance.
Second. May I ask for a vote?
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Seisong?
Aye.
The motion for continuance has passed with three ayes. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council. Except where specified otherwise, appeal shall be filed with the city clerk no later than 15 calendar days following the planning commission's decision. Exceptions to the 15-day filing period include the following. Appeal shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the planning commission's action for use permits and variances, and 10 calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. Thank you. This, is there a...
Are we under the next agenda item?
Yes. Thank you. Ask the staff for any reports or other presentations, study sessions?
I don't really have any, any new items to report. Council's been dark most of the summer, so there have been council meetings. So they'll start up again in early September with their next regular meeting schedule, so we'll see from there.
No other items initiated by staff? Any items initiated by the commission?
Nothing, thank you.
Right. Okay, may I ask for a motion for adjournment?
Don't hear it. Do you just adjourn?
I can?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you. Oh, boy.